Thank you very much Chair. Just to introduce ourselves, I'm Mark Hand, Head of Planning Housing and Place Shaping for the Council.
Rachel Lewis, Planning Policy Manager for the Council.
Thanks for coming along this afternoon for the meeting. The purpose of this item is to brief members on the Growth Options consultation on the local development plan, that's currently a live consultation, and to seek the Select Committee's feedback, scrutiny, for those comments to be taken into account. We'll talk through a little bit about the context to help you understand where we're coming from. So I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but in terms of the very beginning of the story, why the new local development plan is important or relevant, I'm sure you'll be familiar with what an LDP is, but it allocates land for development, for housing, employment, tourism. Renewable energy will be a newer allocation in this new LDP. It also designates areas of the county for protection, and it will then contain a raft of policies which will be the basis for determining future planning applications. I'm sure you'll all be familiar, but just to note, our LDP just covers the local planning authority area, so the parts of our county that's within the national park, that will have its own LDP. So it's very much one of the key tools for shaping the council's future, the county's future, and delivering the council's core purpose of building sustainable and resilient communities for the benefit of current and future generations. It doesn't sit in isolation, so alongside the LDP will be an Economic Ambition Strategy, local transport plan, and an infrastructure plan, looking at what's needed to support the growth within it. In fact, the Economic Ambition Strategy, or the title might change slightly, is due to become for the council members or cabinet in the early autumn, late summer, so around about September time, and that will set some of the path for the LDP to follow. Foundation blocks, we've already been through with yourselves in this Select Committee forum, but just as a quick reminder, we've broken it down to, you know, what's the problem that we're trying to solve? So we've identified 38 issues, opportunities, and challenges, largely informed by the Public Service Board's Local Wellbeing Plan from Monmasheer and the extensive consultation that happened then. Then what do we want Monmasheer to look like and feel like by 2033? So that's the vision, and what do we need to get there? We've identified 17 objectives and consulted on those. Members are probably aware that in July, we took a revised paper back to Cabinet to look again at the 17th objective around climate change, just to update it in the light of the subsequent climate emergency declaration. So that 17th objective was tweaked slightly. I won't go through this in detail, members, but you'll probably recall seeing this before, this infographic highlighting some of the key issues facing the county, and many of them, you'll recall, were to do with things like our demography, the imbalance there, house prices and wages in the county, and the extent to which we should look to intervene in those matters. Also in there are things around infrastructure, we're very clear on that message, and opportunities for the county, so city deal, growth in Bristol, seven tolls go in, to what extent do they present opportunities for the county, and also a reminder about what makes the county so beautiful and special, so our heritage, our landscape, and those matters. In terms of the vision, we're not consulting on that at the moment, we've been through that stage, but I won't spend more time on this, mindful of learning more time later. And then the 17 objectives, and as I mentioned, the 17th one about climate change was revised following the Climate Emergency Declaration. One point that's worth noting is the order of these, climate change isn't last because it's the least important or an afterthought, and these are ordered by the wellbeing goals in the Wellbeing Act. So in terms of where we are now, we are consulting on growth and spatial options, so that is how much the county should grow by, and broadly how it should be distributed. After this consultation, we'll go back and do some more assessment of those responses, and we'll pick from that a preferred strategy, and we'll bring that recommendation to council, we're aiming for October's meeting. Once councils agreed or endorsed a preferred strategy for consultation, we'll go out for six weeks and have further engagement with communities around that. So that preferred strategy consultation and engagement is a statutory stage that we're required to do, and the one we're doing at the moment is an extra stage we've added in, rather than just present people with what we think the right answer is, and then potentially go backwards from there, or do a bit of a rear-guard action, we're trying to engage with people at this early stage, and help shape that preferred strategy. So in terms of the detail then, and what we're consulting on, there are eight different growth options and five different spatial options. The evidence base behind it, we've done jointly with Torvine and Blainagh Gwent, because they're also doing LDPs in very close succession with ours, but we've also been looking east towards England to see what's happening there, and north to the Brecon Beacons National Park, who are a few months ahead of us, they've just gone out to consultation on their preferred strategy, but we're working closely with all of those neighbours. So in terms of growth scenarios, Edge Analytics, a consultancy, prepared these for us, Torvine and Blainagh Gwent, these are the Monmasheer scenarios, and there's 20 of them, so we've narrowed those down to eight on which to consult. You won't be able to read the detail from where you're sat, but the blue bars are population projections, so they're based on past trends, potentially some changes to those and escalating those forwards to 2033, and then if your population grows by this number, you need to think about X homes and X jobs. The yellow ones in the centre are around dwellings, so if you carry on building houses at previous rates and project that forwards, that's many homes you would need, or you would build, which would mean your population grows by so much, and you need this many jobs to go with the houses, so they're dwelling led projections. And then the grey ones are employment led, so if we take actions to try and change our economy in a certain way, we'd target these sectors, have this many jobs, you'd need then this many homes for housing the workforce, and the population grows by X percents. So the eight that we've selected range from a net nil scenario to radical structural change in terms of our economy and the highest end of that, so I'll talk through these really briefly, and then talk through some of the behind-the-scenes assessments. So on the far left on this slide, members, you have the net nil scenario, which imagines that we have a net balance of in-migration to the county, so we have no more people moving into the county than the moving out. As you're probably aware, the historic growth of our county is due to in-migration, this scenario balances that and assumes the same number of people moving out as moving in, and therefore the only other change is around our natural population. In our case, we have more deaths than births, and so this scenario would actually result in a 4% decline in our population, 150 fewer homes will be needed, and it projects that you'd need 3,990 fewer jobs, which we'll talk about later, I expect. The second one across is the Welsh Government 2014 Population Projections, that's what we're required by the regs as the starting point. So you look at those projections, which look at what happens in years preceding 2014, and just imagines that those continue after 2014 up to 2033. So that's the starting point for our work until you add in any other kind of policy choices, which could be negative, as per the first scenario. So this sees a 1% level of growth for the county up to 2033. To give you some context, our population's grown by, I think, 10 or 11% between 2001 and now. The middle one is a dwelling-led one that I mentioned, so that gives you 7% population growth, and that assumes that we build as many houses each year in the next 15 years as we have on average in the past 15 years, so that's about 247 homes. And then under that scenario, you'd look at how many jobs do you need for those people, and what does the population look like at the end, so that's a housing-led one. This next one along, the first of the grey ones, is 9% population growth, and that's based on our economy matching the UK growth rates. So at the moment, Monmasheer does well in comparison to the rest of Wales, but Wales is behind the UK as a whole. So if we were to up our game and match UK, that's what that one would look like. And then you have these, I'll come to the blue one after, but these three grey ones on the right-hand side, where if you can read the writing, it talks about RSC, which is Radical Structural Change, to our economic base, and then some of them say CR reducing, which is our commuting ratio. So the left-hand one looks at something more radical changing on our economic base, this is where the Future Economy is a Monmasheer report that we talked about in previous months comes in. So this lower one is the lowest end of jobs growth, which is around 3,800 jobs, the one on the right-hand side is the highest level, which is around 8,700 jobs created, and that's looking about, if you had that many jobs, what does the population then look like? How many houses do you need to accommodate that workforce? And the growth is factored from that direction. So that more extreme example gives us a 22% population growth. The CR references, this commuting ratio reducing, looks at, whereas at the moment 40% of our economically active population commutes out of the county to work, if we created more jobs but reduced that proportion of people, or that ratio of people that are commuting out, you would achieve the same level of economic growth without needing to build so many homes, whereas if you went for that many extra jobs, but 40% are still commuting out, you need more homes because there's a lot of people here, a lot of people working, but only some of them are working in county in these new jobs created, if that makes sense. And then last but not least is this blue one here, which is population projections based on this second option, but factoring in some projections around the seven tolls, so accepting its early days in terms of identifying trends, but if our population grows based on a seven tolls coming in and a higher level of inward migration to the county, that will give us an 18% population growth by 2033.
Confused about which option, because you don't say when you talk about it which option you're talking about, I'm trying to make some notes, thank you.
In the consultation reports, councillor Brown, we've numbered them one to eight, going from the left-hand side.
Yeah, I've been making notes, I've got up to option four, and then option five, and it said more extreme gives us 22%, more jobs commuting out, and then I was a bit confused about which option we were talking about as you were going along, thank you.
Okay, those comments were around options five and seven with commuting ratio reduced. The higher level of growth, the 22%, is around option eight, and then I darted back to the blue one, which is option six, looking at population-led projection, factoring in the seven tolls and those. So sitting behind this, part of the consultation is the Edge Analytics Report, which gives us these options, and then there's a longer paper by us, which is about 108 pages. To try and make that manageable, we've done an executive summary and also an easy read guide, which has been handed around at the start of the meeting. So obviously, the easy read guides, 10 pages long, by its essence, it loses a lot of detail trying to summarise right down to the pithiness of the arguments, but hopefully it's a useful starting point for yourselves and communities to get engaged, and then dip into the longer report to understand where some of those comments have come from. In the longer report, we've looked at what the graphs look like for housing growth, jobs growth, and against the other issues and objectives in the plan, so we won't go through them all, but by way of example, with demography, looking at that challenge as a particular example, I'll flick through eight graphs for each of the different options that take you through the demographic change. So this graph here shows you in 2033 what the population looks like compared to now. If the bar is blue and below the line, it means the population in that five-year age group has declined, if it's in the orangey colour and above the line, it means that that five-year population cohort has increased. So on the left-hand side, you've got 0 to 4, on the right-hand side you've got 90+ and the age categories in-between. The vertical axis, the lowest number on there is minus 3,000, the highest is plus 3,000. So if you just skim through the options, looking solely at demography, this just gives you an idea of how those different options with more growth go some way to try and tackle that imbalance in our demography, and thinking about the future economic opportunities and sustainability of our communities going forwards. So I won't talk about those in more detail now, other than to say, you'll have noticed on the right-hand side, the older population grows in every single scenario, and the 40 to 59-year age group still declines in every scenario, even at that higher level of growth.
Talking about you needing jobs for people, but I was talking to a gentleman this morning, just over from that housing estate, and he works in London, he goes up every day, and he said quite a lot of the people, his friends and colleagues in Abigavenny do the same thing, not necessarily London, Swindon, all sorts of places, he said he actually, he'd just travelled over the world as well, but he said you can't afford to buy the houses in Abigavenny, the better class houses, and have a job in Abigavenny, you need to have a job somewhere else, and he said it's quite, within his sphere of friends, it's quite the common thing for them to live in Monmasheer, but to travel every day quite long distances and never think anything of it, so I don't know where that comes to in your graph.
I think councillor Powell, that's something that we identify as being one of the issues with the outcommuting. Part of the further challenge is quite often, people tend to spend their earnings where they work rather than where they live, so you can end up with some pretty well-paid people living in the county but spending their money elsewhere, which is great for those other places, but not so great for ourselves. I mean, in itself, to an extent, some of that will always happen, and we've, you know, we've taken a step back and said, well, is it a particular problem? But in terms of some of that spending power, and also in terms of the environment, ideally, where possible, people would work closer to where they live or live close to where they work. So what we'd like to be able to do is allow, enable people to be able to live in the county and work in the county. There will always be some life choices, I mean, that doesn't happen for various reasons. I think we need to be realistic that the reason why somebody lives where they live is more complex than just it being close to work, you know, you've got family connections, school catchments, children in education in various ways, and people probably move job more often than they move home, so you might start off living somewhere logical but end up with a bit of a commute. So there's some complex things going on behind the scenes, it's about making sure, if possible, we can have those opportunities for people to live and work within the county.
Sorry, can I interrupt? Could you turn your light off, please?
Oh, I thought I...
Secondly, councillor Dowie, would you like to say something? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and a reference to the point Maureen made, as being one of these people who lived outside London for some time, and the point with train users going up from Abigavenny in Watmott. The issue is really quite a clear one, because if they get in-city subsidies for travelling, which is one of the factors that ensures the would-be employer gets the employee that they want, they make them an allowance for travelling by train, and what happens is, at the moment, you've only got a look on the trains nowadays, especially early morning ones, everybody who's on the train, the moment they get on, they are working, they don't sit down and write, read in the paper, they are working, so the issue in many instances is that it is no hardship for them to be out, it enables them to put in arguably a longer working day than some people that are going in and standing up in the train and whatnot, so it's quite a complicated thing, it's another way of running your life, if you like, and it worked well enough for me for quite a few years.
Chair, members, if we carry on with the presentation, then questions at the end might make more sense. In terms of the paper then, I'll pass over to Rachel in a mental through the spatial options, but we've done a red, amber, green traffic light assessment of the different growth options, we've assessed them against the objectives, the 17 of them, so on there you've got the eight options along the top and the 17 objectives down the side. It's worth actually going back and reading what the objectives say and how the traffic light rating is given to make that make a bit more sense, because some of it's around how you can provide enhancements as well. So Chair, I'll pass over to Rachel, we'll talk through the spatial options, then we'll cover at the end some other factors we're considering, and open up to questions if that's okay.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm just going to talk about the spatial options that we've identified, so these are on page 10 of the handout that I passed around, and they're also on the screen. So we've identified five spatial options for consultation, the first one being a continuation of the existing LDP strategy, and that is focused on primary settlements, so the main towns, Abigavenny, Monmouth, Chepstow, some development in Sevenside, and some main villages. So that's the first one, just to say, for each of the options, we set out the pros and cons, as Mark said, these are given in much more detail in the background paper that sits behind the Easy Read Guide. Option two is dispersed growth and a new settlement, and just to flag up at this stage, all of the maps going forward, the dots are indicative, just to give an indication, so it doesn't mean to say that, you know, they mean their actual settlements, it's just to give an idea of the spatial distribution for the options, and also that we haven't identified a new settlement on the maps, we've just put it as an option, because we've had three new settlements submitted as candidate sites to date, so it's too early to identify one at the moment. So this option distributes growth across primary settlements, so that's the main towns again, secondary settlements, Sevenside, and sustainable rural areas. Option three is proportionate growth across urban and rural areas, so that would mean more growth in the most sustainable settlements, so the main towns, Sevenside, and some of the rural areas. Option four is to focus on a new settlement, but with limited growth in primary, secondary settlements and Sevenside only, so this option would be no growth in the county's rural areas. And then the last option, option five, is to focus on the M4 Corridor, M48, is to capitalise on links, strategic links to Cardiff Capital Region and the Bristol Region, so that would mean, you know, very little growth or no growth in other areas of the county. So that's a very brief run-through of the spatial options, as we said, there's a lot of detail behind it in the main report, setting out all the pros and cons, and we've assessed them against the LDP objectives as well, so we would recommend you to have a look at those, just to give you more meat on the bones, as it were. Thank you.
Just two more bits from myself, Chair, and we'll open up to questions. So in terms of what we're doing at the moment, consultation runs until the 5th of August, we've been to area clusters and area committee meetings, the youth forum, which was a really interesting debate with the young people from our schools, so certainly look to do more with them at the next consultation engagement stage, Abigavenny Civic Society, and yesterday afternoon, we had a drop-in session with a really good attendance, actually, and some really interesting discussions with people who attended, quite a mix in terms of from around the county, different parts, and yeah, some really interesting views raised, which we'll factor into the consultation responses. So when we write the preferred strategy, there'll be a report consultation, which will summarise all the comments that we've received as part of that report. Just to touch on this bit around future steps, so you're clear on what else is happening, so well, going forwards, the Consultational Close will assess the responses against the objectives, the Wellbeing Act, National Plan and Policy, et cetera, will select a preferred strategy and report that to council for endorsement to consult, and there'll be a further workshop for the Economy and Development Select Committee meeting around that in due course. When we're out to consultation with that, we'll do a further call for candidate sites, so that's a stage where landowners, communities, developers can put forward suggested sites for development. It's very true to say the first stage of that call has been dominated by residential development proposals, so we'll be doing some work with Frances and Cath and colleagues to try and engage with the employment sector and understand what their needs are and where they need to develop, because it's crucial, there's LDP factors in, job delivery as well as housing, and that's true, I think, at whatever level of growth we're talking about. We'll then have to go through assessing the sites and identify the best sites for development. There should be, in National Planning Policy terms, a focus on brownfield sites, but you'll appreciate in our county, they are relatively few and far between, so we've done a public call for brownfield sites already, hasn't come up with many options, but we are also looking at, and members of Adult Select Committee will be familiar, looking at empty homes and the extent to which they can contribute, and also the empty spaces above shops in our towns, so as well as reflecting the fact our high streets are changing, seeing if we can do something with the upper floors, albeit they're private ownership. So we've already done a survey of Abigavenny as a trial, so we'll be completing that and doing surveys around Chepstow, Monmouth, Usk and Caldercot as well, to factor that in and see if there's options there. But unless we go for a very low-growth option, it's highly unlikely they're going to meet all of our needs, certainly contribute, but we will be looking at other development sites as well, I expect. We'll then go about understanding when we know how much growth and where, we'll be working with you to understand what the associated infrastructure needs are and how we deliver that. What we'd like to do in this plan that we didn't do in the previous plan is some master planning around those bigger sites, and we'll also be working with you on the policy content. So for example, we talked about the climate emergency, at this stage, other than looking at allocations for renewable energy, it's more thinking about what is built and where, but some of the detail is in actually the policies around the types of housing or buildings, so thinking about carbon neutrality, if we have better broadband connectivity, can reduce the need for people to commute to work at all, some of the days of the week, probably not five days a week, but some of the days, so take out the need for them to travel, look at the local transport plan and public transport connectivity, but again, accepting the nature of our county means people are certainly currently very reliant on the private car, so in what way can we improve that, electric vehicle charging, how far do we go with policies on that? Looking at renewable energy on buildings, so people constantly say, well, you're building these things, why aren't the solar panels on the roof? You know, not just solar farms in the fields, so that's something we can look at, but we also need to balance up, they will deliver excellent outcomes, but they will add to the cost of building a home, which is likely to get passed on to the buyer, so how do we balance up with our affordable housing, desperate need and ambition? And then also look at things like minimum size standards on the market housing, to what extent should our plan seek to intervene in the market, or is it just best leaving the market housing to be what the market delivers? So all of those more detailed points come at a future stage, and there'll certainly be workshops and engagement around those topics, but hopefully that sets a bit of context as to where we are at the moment. So back to the beginning, current consultations on those eight growth options and five spatial options, we're mindful that that gives us quite a matrix of different possibilities, so if everybody in the room agreed on the same spatial option but had a different level of growth, that gives us some different outcomes, so it's quite a lot of work for us to do going through each of those potential outcomes at the end. But I think that's all we wanted to say for now, thanks Chair, happy to take questions from members.
Okay, thank you to Mark and Rachel for a detailed report on this part of the LDP process. Firstly, I'd like to invite members of the committee to ask any questions that they might like to pose, so that would be myself, councillor Dowie, and councillor Watkins.
Councillor Watkins.
Thank you, Chair. So obviously, I'm generally very interested in the impact on the climate, having put forward that as a proposal, and I noticed from your little chart, it shows the red, amber, green options, that option six and option eight both are highlighted as red for, yeah, that one, red in terms of climate change. So could you describe better the actual impact of that, or should that just automatically be meaning that we should not really be looking at these as options because they have such a significant impact, and we've already assessed them and they've been deemed to be inappropriate considering we have claimed a climate emergency? Thank you.
Just refreshing my memory from Rachel as to why we put them in red, we'll refer back to the main report, but those two in particular are where the commuting levels would end up being highest, so option six was the one that looked at just the normal population projection by factoring in the seven tolls, so in effect, lots of people moving in, potentially living elsewhere, but commuting pretty much car-based and pretty much unabated, so that's why we flagged it as red, we thought there would be a negative impact on that goal or that objective. Number eight... impact on that goal or that objective. Number eight is similar in the sense it is looking at maximising jobs growth through radical structural change, but without tackling the commuting ratio. So that's why option seven and option eight look at the same level of jobs growth, but you end up with less commuting and less housing growth in option seven, because it's trying to retain people in county. So that's why they're red. I wouldn't go as far at this stage as to say they're automatically ruled out. We haven't weighted the objectives to say that number 17 is more important than number three or anything like that at this stage. If you did rule out everything with a red in, then you only left with one option, actually looking at it quickly. We haven't looked at it in that way at this stage. So in terms of how we've done the red, amber, green rating, we're saying that green has a potential to positively add to the objective. Amber is a neutral impact and red would have a negative impact. So in terms of the amber ones, we believe that with some of the policy interventions that we talked about just now on the very last slide, we could mitigate that. To an extent, with a level of positive growth, there will be things that we'll have to mitigate, because you are physically building probably on fields and people will be moving around quite likely in cars. So we're trying to be realistic about that. But we also think there's, just having no growth isn't positive in that sense because of what it does to the demography and the sustainability of communities. So it isn't to say that not building anything would actually be a positive impact in terms of climate change and doesn't give us a chance to improve the quality or the efficiency some of the housing stock. So yeah, so not ruled out at this stage. But yeah, those two are flagged up reds. I think that's the key reason why. Is there anything else? Yeah.
Does that answer your questions, councillor Watkins?
Yes, it does. I have plenty more. But so I have a concern that we have this idea that we would actually be able to build our way out of our demographic challenge. Monmouthshire is a lovely county. Lots of people want to retire here. So people move here for retirement. People who are at a latter stage in their lives, working lives, move here and then retire here. And they don't move somewhere else when they retire, because we have such a lovely county for retired people to live in. And I don't see how we'll end up building and building and building and we'll still end up with this increasing retired population. So I really question whether we're ever going to be able to build our way out of this problem and we're actually going to have to find another different solution at some other point. Or we'll just have to accept that we are going to have this demographic trend and it's going to continue.
I think Chair, in response to that, the projections, and they are projections, but they're clear that the older age group will continue in every scenario. But we're not seeking to reduce the older age groups. It's more to get the balance in the population so not have the loss of the younger age groups. That's what we'd be seeking to address. So it's not saying we don't want older people or more older people or people coming here to retire. I'd like to think they'd still want to, even if the county grows. We need to make sure we don't ruin the things that make the county so special. And I'm confident we could do that and accommodate growth. But it's more about those lower ends of the graph and making sure that works. I mean, I won't go on too much about the reasons why, because I'm sure you're familiar with the reasons why. But if by 2033, effectively, all we have is those older populations and very much fewer of the younger working age, then it does change our economic base and our attractiveness to employers. It changes the way we can deliver services or just the way communities can support the older people. Because if everyone there is of an older age group, there will be some challenges around that as well. So that social sustainability, I suppose. So yeah, so yeah, we're not saying that we'll end the increase in the older groups. It's more growth to try and balance it out to make sure communities are sustainable in that social sense.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Duvie, do you have any questions at the moment?
I always do that. And not at the moment. The thing that does interest me is we're looking at the number of houses we want to build. But the thing that worries me is if we don't address the issue of how we attract employers to be in the county as well, how can we decide what is the mixture of the houses that we want to build? Because if we don't get the, that need, if you like, right, then we are having houses that people will live in and be employed elsewhere. And so then we've got the problem of transport. And those three legs of that stool, if you like, are really intertwined. And I've not yet heard anybody talk to address that problem. And that really concerns me, because if you pull one leg out, then the whole thing fails effectively. And that's something I don't think we're addressing at the moment.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Would you like to say anything about that?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I completely agree in terms of the need to fully consider the jobs. I think there is a misconception that when we're talking about growth, we're just talking about houses. So in the Easy Read Guide and throughout, we've been really clear and keen to say, no, it's talking about this many homes, this many jobs. Members, Cabinet in particular, have been extremely clear that it cannot just be about housing. That won't sustain the county for exactly the reasons that you've talked about. And we can't assume that we'll build houses and jobs will somehow appear. So the other conversations we're having around the engagement with the industries and employment sector and around the economics ambition strategy is, and the Future Economies Report, is what are those growing sectors? What do they need and what would attract them to Monmouthshire? There's elements of that that are possibly about the message we send out. So if Cabinet agrees an economic ambition strategy that is positive and we publicise it, and we take some action to attract people here, I think we stand a far greater chance of success. It's probably fair to say that certainly in an LDP sense, in the current plan, we've allocated land and pretty much waited. The house builders have come, because of the nature of our county, they will. The employers haven't. And some of that, there's things we could have done to intervene, to assemble land, to perhaps to promote it a bit more. But with the resources and perhaps the approach we've had up until now, we haven't done that. So that's something we're talking about, how we change. Chair, do you want, I don't know if you're happy, I didn't know if Frances or Cath wanted to add anything to that.
That's fine, if you'd like to.
Nothing particularly, other than to say that, you know, we concur really, the future economies analysis that we've undertaken reflects, you know, as you've just stated, we do have an issue with a lack of employability land in the county and also commercial premises. And that's something that we need to address as we go forward, hence why we've had such a, you know, sort of a detailed conversation to get us to this point, really. So yes, it's a matter of us working together to ensure that we've got the right strategies in place to encourage that employment growth.
Okay, thank you. If I may, I'd like to also ask a question as a member of the committee. Mark, you mentioned that we need an increase in population in order to maintain service delivery as a whole. Is there a ratio between the incoming working age population and the non-working population that we need to achieve at some point in the future? Or think about something along those lines. Thank you.
That's a toughie. Yeah, there isn't a number that we have in our back pockets to say this is the answer. I mean, one of our strengths is the population of the county as a whole, the proportion that's economically, sorry, the proportion of the economically active age groups that are working is really high above the Welsh average. So we have one or two pockets of deprivation that we mustn't forget about in the county. But as a whole, the county is doing really well. It's the size of that economic base. And if we leave things unchecked and the population just ages, then, you know, they will get to retirement age and stop working. So it's around getting that balance and proportion right. But I don't know that there's an actual percentage identified anywhere at this stage that we need to target.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking in terms of a profit and loss account type approach, where you can actually, you know, get hard numbers and work out how many new houses you need to actually support the county going forward. Maybe it's an alternative approach to the LDP type determination that we've gone down so far. It's more appropriate to a business as opposed to a county council, perhaps.
Yeah, we could give that some thought, Chair. I suppose to an extent, it depends on the jobs that we attract. Some of our strength areas at the moment in terms of employment are agriculture, hospitality, tourism, which are brilliant and all very much part of what keeps the county going and makes it beautiful. But equally, they're not the best paid jobs in the world. So that adds to our double whammy dilemma of high house prices but low average house gold income. So yeah, so we'd have to factor in the actual type of jobs, not just a number.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Now I'd like to open up questions to all the members. Councillor Brown.
Yes, thank you. I think basically if you look at all of the high growth options, they have implications for increased pressure on Monmouthshire's landscape biodiversity, increased pressure on Monmouthshire's infrastructure and challenges in reducing climate change impact. So I think, you know, those factors have to be borne in mind, because at the moment, it looks like there's a sort of a, you know, growth and jobs equation. And it's not really as simplistic as being presented, you know. Jobs and housing doesn't necessarily follow. And that's just a statistical outcome. And there isn't any actual evidence for that. You know, for example, we had four and a half thousand extra homes in relation to the last LDP, but there's no evidence to suggest anything that was linking to employment there because the analysis hadn't been done, we were told in the workshop. The other thing is, is that I think it's important to bear in mind our demographics in relation to the rest of the UK, because basically if we project forward, the population in general is aging and it's part of a trend. It's also very similar to other rural authorities in the sense that not only do rural authorities attract older people, but also, you know, that's part of a general trend in any event. And I think, you know, that has to be borne in mind. And also, we've got a situation, even in Monmouthshire, where there's quite a substantial number of people who want jobs and can't get them, even with our current housing stock. So I think, you know, some of this has to be put in the proper context. And we were also told that basically between 2001 and now, there's been a 10 or 11% growth in population. But the demographics for this area actually show that basically there won't be a growth in population between now and about 2033. So, you know, obviously, it does also say that the number of deaths will exceed the number of births. So presumably, housing will become vacant in that sense. But I think also, you know, to consider how growth in relation to jobs, I don't think is particularly realistic if you don't consider the infrastructure side. Because, you know, all of the areas in Monmouthshire have had, have got significant infrastructure problems, because we've built more and more houses without any additional infrastructure during the last plan. And, you know, effectively, that's causing issues of its own. So I think, you know, the council has to be realistic about these sort of issues as well, you know, because of the fact that, you know, there's only so much pressure that different areas can take. Also on the spatial options, all of the options for the different areas in the county haven't been included in the spatial options. For example, there's no, there's an option with regard to overall, but there's no, there's options for the south, but there's no options for the north. And, you know, we've already heard about, you know, people commuting long distances from Abgavenny. So I think that there needs to be more of a balance here, because if you only present certain options, then other options aren't on the table. And, you know, I think there needs to be some fairness and balance here. And I would also mention to the Chair that there is, you know, a member of the public here who ought to be allowed the opportunity to speak as well. Chairman? You busy with the conversation? Okay then, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Chair. And there's some points that I'd say and agree with. So we absolutely have to consider the infrastructure. We have to consider the wider sustainability. So councillor Duvie made the point about the three-legged stool. It's actually got four legs now, thanks to the Wellbeing Act. So there's the economy, society, environment and culture. And we do have to bear all of those, all of those in mind. What quite often happens in a planning context is it becomes a bit of a one-legged stool and the environment dominates, which is possibly why we've focused some of our discussion on the other, or certainly two of the other legs. But they do all need to be borne in mind, certainly. In terms of the spatial options, I think Rachel explained the reason option five's in there with the focus on the south is because of the economic pressures and the growth pressures from Cardiff and Bristol. So that's the reason that one's in there and there isn't a northern equivalent. But if that were your consultation feedback, that you thought an option six for only in the north should be considered, then we can take that forward.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Eason.
Thank you Chair. I'm looking at your growth options three and four. I'm not looking at option five, because that's specifically in the south of the county, which will relate to same sort of answers. Where do you see these two options fitting into your summary matrix? Is it option six, seven, or option eight? I think it's somewhere in the middle of those three, which says to me that you also talk about spatial across the county in terms of secondary settlements, sorry, rural segments across the county, as opposed to the actual work you want to do, want to consider on the Sevenside. How do you match those three up in terms of your projections on the population? And where would you consider the new settlement location to be determined? Would that be the one I mentioned in Sevenside last week, where it might be in the south of the county? Because this is all part of the picture. Would a new settlement of how many, four, five thousand houses, fit the bill? Would it fit the bill in terms of the needs of that particular area, in terms of sustainability, doctors, surgeries, schools and not what?
Okay, thanks councillor Eason. In terms of the first part of the question, so looking at the spatial options, or if I'm stood you correctly, looking at spatial options and how do they fit with the growth options, that is effectively part of the consultation. So really and truly, there's 40 different options coming from this. You know, you could pick one of those spatial options and each person in the room could have a different growth level and give you a slightly different answer or a very different answer. So there is no decision at that stage. That's part of what we're consulting on. So yeah, to use that example, you could pick option three, spatial option three, but go for a higher level of growth. And councillor Brown might pick, to pick another councillor, might pick the same one but a lower level of growth. So yeah, there isn't an answer at this stage. In terms of the question about the new settlement and where it would go, we've done one call for candidate sites and three have been suggested. So there's one of about 1,500 homes northwest of Raglan, and then two in the south of the county. So there's one just north of Magarundi, Rambo Junction 23A, which is suggested to be between, or round about 8,000 homes, but with jobs as well, schools, retail. So looking to be self-contained. And a similar scale in the crick, what we call a park wall roundabout. So if you know where San Pierre is, the roundabout at the top with the Indian restaurants, kind of around between there and the solar farm. So they're the suggestions on the table at the moment. there and the solar farm. So they're the suggestions on the table at the moment. But if we were to go forward with a preferred strategy that included a new settlement, then during the next call for candidate sites in the autumn, I wouldn't be surprised if other sites came in. So we'd be looking at all those different options. If we pick a scenario that doesn't include a new settlement, then it becomes academic anyway. In terms of new settlement delivery, it would be a longer project, a bit of a slower burn. So to set up the infrastructure for it and then start building out, it would start appearing at the later half of the plan, rather than straight away. So we would also need to bear in mind, what do we do in terms of housing, jobs, infrastructure in the shorter part, and other parts of the county. So yeah, it could be slightly complex, but it could also be an opportunity, particularly if members feel like we get into the point of having limited how much we can just build on the edge of the existing main towns, and we need to do something a bit different.
Can I come back on the one where you mentioned northwest of Magar, where I'm aware that Newport spreading eastwards from Lamburn Village into that particular area. A point I raised the other day was that these will effectively become knitted together in some respects, and there'll have to be a lot of cooperation between the authorities on opposite boundaries or within the boundaries, which will add more pressure to the need for a proper look at the infrastructure that would support those communities. Because I'm told that there's going to be some work to the Newport side of St. Bride's, and you're looking to work for the right other south side or east side of St. Bride's, which would really make a town of its own into authorities.
Chair, in terms of Newport's LDP, theirs has a slightly different time span. So theirs runs until 2026. And my understanding at the moment is it's working. They've got no intention of renewing it early. But their current plan includes a large eastern expansion area on the old Lamburn Steel Works and a bit along to the north. There's 4,000 homes on Glanflyn on the old steelworks site, and then a business park, and then the steelworks. Then you've got a teeny gap. You've got Tesco Distribution Centre in Wilkinson's where the wind turbines are. Then there's one further employment allocation that straddles our boundary with Newport. And then there's currently countryside up to the brewery. I'm not aware of anything else in Newport that's coming in that direction. They've also got the Lamburn Village part of the eastern expansion area where Edros just started building. It's just 1,100 homes there. But no, I'm not aware of anything else, other than that one employment allocation that straddles our boundary in our current plans, both of us, that's coming near us. But yeah, we certainly need to work closely with them. They'll be interested in our growth options for this plan. And we'll be working with them, as well as Bliny Gwentorvine and Looking East as well.
Okay, thank you. councillor Grukot.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the complexity of the work that is involved in this development of the new LDP. And representing one of the wards in Abegavenny, and looking back over time in Abegavenny, the nature of the town has changed quite dramatically. So that at one time, the biggest employer in town was the railway. There were other sizable employers in the town, people like Sargent's Print Works, Cooper's Filters, just over in Landforest. These were not high-paid jobs, and the people who worked in them did not live in big houses. Since I moved to Abegavenny, I don't think anything smaller than a three-bedroomed house has been built, and many of them are four-bedroomed and bigger. So the whole nature of the community in Abegavenny is changing. And there is a pressure, undoubtedly, to see the continued expansion of the town. So I was interested to look at the various options that you're beginning to explore. And I asked a question at the last county council about liaising with the National Park as a neighbouring planning authority. And this afternoon, you said they're a little further on than we are. And I'd like to ask you again about the nature of liaison between planners in Monmouthshire and planners within the National Park Authority. Because I am being quoted by quite a few people in my ward, a document that has come from the National Park, which speaks quite firmly about the need and the desire of the National Park to support Monmouthshire with the expansion of Abegavenny. And my ward runs right to the border of the National Park. The lane at the northern end of my ward is the border of the National Park. And I am aware of the first of their candidate sites moving on to the next phase. And that is actually a Monmouthshire Housing Association looking at a growth of 150 houses within the National Park, just literally in the field to the north of my ward. My ward ends at the old Hill College site. And the people who live there are now up in arms at the thought of 150 new houses within the National Park, literally across the lane from where they live. So I'm interested in the process that you're going through as Monmouthshire, liaising with the Next Door Authority, who have already expressed a desire to help you to see Abegavenny expand, when you say that we haven't yet got a chosen option.
Yes, a good question. Thanks councillor Grukot. The discussions we've had are far more broad and generalistic than that. So we haven't got anywhere near discussing numbers, certainly not discussing sites. But we have been discussing with them. They've offered they could potentially take some growth pressure from us, which is, to be fair, probably the opposite conversation to, I imagine. So yeah, we were open to that potential and that possibility. But we haven't commented or offered our comments on any suggested sites or even levels at this stage. The number that I had heard mentioned or was in my mind is significantly lower than the 150 you mentioned. And in a meeting in the last couple of weeks, someone seemed to have heard the number 400 dwellings, which certainly isn't anywhere near on my radar. So we haven't had those detailed conversations yet. It's very much just around trying to understand the different options. And yeah, do we need to help them? Are they able to help us? So in that context. But the number that we were looking at, we've got another meeting coming up in the next couple of weeks, actually, when we'll get more detail on their direction of travel, their level of growth. But yeah, it certainly wasn't anything significant in that direction yet. If it were to be, then clearly we need to start not only thinking for them about the landscape impacts and that kind of thing, but the infrastructure and how it affects Abegavenny as a town.
Okay, councillor Watkins.
Thank you. So relating to the spatial strategy, we've talked about demographics, we've talked about the difficulties in keeping young people within the county. And so looking at the spatial options, it strikes me that we have to have some sort of dispersed growth in our housing structure across the county. Because if we just entirely focus down in the south, not just that I'm down in the south myself, and I don't really want all of the building to happen where I live, we won't be actually serving the needs of the populations further north in the county. So if we actually want people to get their 20-year-old kids not living in their houses anymore, and to be able to get their own properties and to get their foot in the ladder, we're going to have to make sure that we have got some growth across the whole county. Otherwise, we're going to turn the south into one suburban jungle, which none of us ever wanted to live in. And yet, people aren't going to be able to afford to buy houses anywhere else in the county. So option five to me looks fairly unrealistic. Otherwise, that is what you will end up doing. But I'm not, until we actually know more details about a secondary settlement and where that might be situated, I don't feel I can actually comment on which one of the other four would be the most appropriate distribution. Because surely, a large new settlement going in one place will have such a massive impact on the surrounding area that you would then want to mitigate against other issues. So I feel a little bit lost as to how to comment more than just saying, I don't think we can dump it all in the south.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from with those comments. I suppose two points. In terms of the first part that you said, obviously provide that feedback. But yeah, we do have three separate housing market areas, one in the north, one in the centre of the county, one in the south. So we need to bear in mind, if you did stick everything in one area, be it the south or the north, what does that do to the other parts? Somebody yesterday came up with a really amazing phrase for that, and I can't remember what it was now. It'll come back to me after this meeting, probably. But trying to understand not just the implications of what you have done, but the kind of knock-on implications of where you haven't done it. Sounded very technical, the way he describes it. In terms of the new settlement, yeah, we deliberately haven't put a dot on the map as an indication, because it would make people assume that that's where it's going. And we genuinely don't know yet if it were to be that option. But if the preferred strategy is one that includes a new settlement, then the future stage will be assessing those options. And that will be part of the decision-making that comes back to council, and there's further community engagement on. Certainly as part of the deposit plan, which looks at where the actual development sites are and what the policies say. So that whole discussion around if it is a new settlement, where and how does that infrastructure work, is all to come. This is the challenge that came up yesterday. Someone was saying they were finding it hard to understand how to comment now, because really, they wanted to know how much growth it meant for the particular town they were interested in. But that's the struggle with trying to get the engagement at an early stage, as well as if we just went and said, well, it's this much for Monmouth, or Abegavenny, or wherever, then the next question would be, oh, I can't really comment, because I want to know which field it is. And before you know it, we're asking them, this is the final plan, yes or no? So that is the age-old challenge, really, with the early engagements, trying to strike that balance. But I understand the dilemma you're facing.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from members? Okay. A member of the, councillor Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention you. Maybe you were just about to say a member of the public could come along to comment here.
A member of the public has indicated an interest in speaking. I think it would be good, in the interest of democracy, to allow this. So if there are any, is there anybody that would object to that? Very fine. Mrs. Dovey, would you care to come down to the front and pose your question, if you still have one? Yes, please, so we can hear you. If you could come down to the front here, that would be great. Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Dovey.
Thank you.
Just like to, yes, would you like to sit down and speak?
Oh, sit down.
That's great. Thank you.
Well, this morning, I was at a meeting of the Lower Y, and we talked about some of these options that we're talking about today. And in 2011, I was on this council as a member. And so I remember the old LDP. And sometimes I listen to what's been said and different things like that. And to my way of thinking, do we not learn from the last one to the next one, in future? And do we not look at perhaps the evidence of what results we came to in the last one, to go forward for this one? Because the way I feel is that we look at Monmouthshire, and it's a lovely place to live. But there's more than just tourism if we are to sustain and keep the place going. If you look at our towns and different things like that, it's lovely, but we need more than, as I said, just looking at tourism or farming all the time. We have got to somehow or other encourage more industry. It may not be what people might want, but to me, this is the only way forward. Because young people today, they need jobs. You talk about the agricultural college over there, which is great, and for farming, that's fine. But a lot of the farms nowadays, and the way even farming is changing, people have to diversify and go into different ways of making their farms profitable, and reliant on the old, if you like. We've got to somehow or other push forward to this present time and this present century ahead. And I just feel that sometimes, we seem to be so steeped in the past and thinking, well, this will still carry us on. But in my view, it won't. And as much as I love it here, I would like many people, for their sons and daughters, to actually get jobs here and live here, find employment here. But it's very, very difficult. Because we don't seem to be offering what other places can offer. And the other thing I'm really concerned of too is education. Because to my way of thinking, education, housing, and employment, they all go together. And the education is also important. With the curriculum that we have for the schools, within our schools, is the curriculum right for the type of business we want to attract? And as I remember, again, before we had the discussions on the LDP, we talked about education, and I hate to bring it up, but I think it was either key stage two, sorry, and key stage four, and perhaps councillor Powell may remember, that we were falling behind, and we needed to improve. So again, I'd like to know some of this information of the past, has anybody looked at it? And are we improving? And are we going forward, instead of just standing still and hoping that something somewhere will give us a complete answer? So thank you for letting me talk, and I hope I haven't bored you. But I just think that we really do need to go forward in a positive way, not negativity. We've got to look and change and see how we can progress, so as we can make Monmouthshire even better than it is. But more for the younger people, instead of an aging population, of which now I am one.
Thank you, Mrs. Dovey, for an interesting, you don't have to go quite yet. You can sit down. Thank you for an interesting contribution to the meeting. I'd like to, would you like to respond in the first instance, Mark? A comment?
Thank you, Chair. The last LDP, we didn't really look at employment and homes as linked as we intend to do this time. So it was slightly different. We allocated employment land, but we didn't really link it to housing growth. I think that is a lesson that we've learnt from the last LDP, that we're looking to do differently this time. Hence, the growth options relate to jobs and homes this time. And that's a requirement of Welsh Government planning policy as well, that we need to consider both, to reduce out commuting and try and create more sustainable communities going forward. And we also monitor how the current LDP is working in terms of employment through our annual monitoring reports. So we look at takeover of employment land, which sectors are coming forward, and things like that. So we have evidence of what's working, but we did do it differently last time, and that's something we're looking to address this time.
If I could just add to that, Chair, briefly. There's a very clear demographic pattern in the county and in many counties with 15 to 90-year-olds leaving, which is directly linked to university-type education primarily. So we've had conversations around what can we do in that regard. I think probably realistically, we'd be highly unlikely to get a university in the county. The way they're funded in a wider system means they're more likely to shrink the number of universities than increase. But we have been looking at what Colle Gwent's doing and how we can work with them. I think part of the key... I think part of the key to it will be having jobs and housing that is affordable, that people can come back to after university should they choose to do so, and seek to encourage them to come back. In terms of the wider points about, you know, what we're teaching in schools, that's a point that's been raised in this particular committee at least once or twice before, once by the good councillor, other Davie. So we're certainly mindful of that. That wouldn't be something that we'd look at in the local development plan. But it is something we've passed on to our colleagues who look at education. Not my region of, or my realm of expertise, but the curriculum is changing in Wales. I'm not sure to what extent that will help with some of the technology and perhaps other IT-type programming courses that are more the future sectors. But we're certainly passing that on again to our colleagues in education to look at what we can do to try and influence that. But that particular topic would be slightly outside of our remit as an LDP, as a land use plan.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Are there any other questions that the councillor Brown?
I think it was mentioned by councillor Grucott about the National Park and Abergaveni. But in the initial slides, you didn't say that there was any consultation. I think you mentioned Torvine and was it Blind Agwent? But there was no mention about consultation with Gloucestershire and obviously in the south area that does have a big impact.
Yeah, sorry, there was a subtle reference, councillor Brown, to looking east and north, so by which I meant Forest of Dean, Gloucestershire, Herefordshire and the Brecon Beacons National Park.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, then in summary, I'd like to say to the officers, thank you very much for the ability to give early feedback. Early engagement is very beneficial to us as a whole. We're not being asked for a decision today. We don't need to take a vote. What we were asked to do was to give feedback, and I think that we provided feedback that I hope is of benefit, including the member of the public coming along as well, which is beneficial. So I think that ends this aspect. Thank you very much.
Chairman, could I just say I was not in the least bit intimidated by the last speaker? Indeed, I was inspired by the last speaker, as I always am.
And you will be duly rewarded later, no doubt, for your speech on that aspect. We're waiting for the scrutiny of the Revenue and Capital Monitoring 2018-19 outturn statement. I don't know who's providing that, the officers, the officer's on his way. Thank you.
Serious comment, which I meant to ask earlier. Within my ward, I've got a ward which basically is pretty new, a big slug of it, is pretty new houses, relatively new houses. You know, well, do we do any research at all on people that have come into the area? I mean, for instance, some people say to me, what is it like? What are communications like? Can I tell them where the train services were and all that sort of thing? And say, for instance, and I say, of course, we benefit from three airports. And this brings about, it's all about the strategic positioning. And they say, well, Bristol, Cardiff, where's the other one? And I always say Heathrow, because the number of people that go out of my ward to Heathrow to travel abroad to work. And the reason they do it is they can get there very, very easily. It's going to be even more easy in a minute with the new transrail and whatnot, which will be stopped in at Reading. I don't know. That is going to have a huge impact on us, by the way, down here in that area for business and whatnot. And I just wonder, do we learn anything, try and learn anything from people who have come down to live here in the past, say, five years? And what they feel about the area, what it offers, what it doesn't offer, what they would ideally like? Whether we just do a bit of simple market research going around to find out just what the punter thinks? I mean, we're making decisions in here and what we think. But do we go out and actually ask them what is their experience? What do they think? Do we do any of that?
Not as far as I'm aware, Chair. I'm not sure if any other services do it directly in that way. In terms of the communications, quite often what would happen is the actual house builders will promote what's in the locality as part of their marketing. So in their little glossy brochure, they'll be saying, well, we're, you know, so far from Cardiff Airport, Bristol Airport, you know, mainline stations. That isn't something we've tended to do so far. But in terms of getting that feedback in that way, not that I'm aware, that could actually be something really interesting. We're talking to several town and community councils at the moment about place plans or community plans. That could be a bit interesting, bit of work and intelligence. They might be interested in gathering for us. But that's something we could certainly think about further. I thought you were going to ask a slightly different question. I'm going to do that. You didn't ask this, but I'll answer anyway. I thought you were going to ask me about, you know, any intelligence about where people are moving in from, and we're starting to try and gather that. So the house builders at the moment, one's provided us an update on the Subbrook site today on where the first 62 occupiers have come from. And interestingly, 50% of Monmouthshire, 31% Bristol South West. Otherwise, the majority is from, I think the 50% is in Monmouthshire within five miles of the site. So it's a mix of coming in from over the border and very local. But we're trying to get that from the other construction sites. We're also trying to get that information from the GP surgeries via the Health Board to understand when people register with a GP and where was their last GP. They can just give us some broad postcodes. We can understand a bit more about what's going on. But in terms of people's actual experience, no, it's down really to informal conversations, engagement sessions like yesterday more than anything else.
In the Transport Strategy Group, we try to inform our point of view by asking the punter. We get bunches of volunteers to go out and speak to the people that are actually getting on the train, where they've come from, where they're going to, that sort of thing. And that is really, really valuable. And it influences our view when we're trying to influence the sort of services that are coming, because that's a part of what this shadow group in the background tries to achieve. But it is something really important. And again, one of the big things, the airways are important. But with the push to get more serious business down here one way or another, it is going to be important, we believe, that we have a good rail service serving this area. That's what we're aiming for. Because the trains that are going to be, high-speed trains when the whole thing is set up, you're going to be able to get on a train here and go straight through to Canary Wharf. I mean, it is, that actually is going to change train travel from South Wales to London to something incredibly different. And that will make this area again more popular with people, business people and whatnot. And perhaps the sort of housing that they would need. And maybe that would drive as well their business decisions if they think, well, that would be a good idea if I have my business near to where I live. It's something where, you know where I'm coming from with this. But it is a thought that we ought to try and find out what are the factors that encourage people to come here when they're coming here, you know, and that sort of thing. You would know better than I how to word something like that. I used to know how to do it, but the jargon's changed and whatnot. But I think that is something that we should be doing. We should be knowing what our existing customers think of being here and what they would think that they would need for the future or anything else, you know.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think that's a point we can take away. We are looking to do some engagement with businesses. I was trying to catch Cath's eye to see if anything like that had been done with the Rural Development Plan. We'll also go back and find out if anything like this has happened with the local wellbeing plan. Because I know they did a whole range of community engagement for that. Trying to remember what questions they asked, but yeah, we'll take that away and see what is done and if there's anything we can add to it.
Sorry, councillor, you haven't got your mic on, and I'd like to move on as well, if possible.
When they send me an email, I have a guessing game as to where they are. And I say, where are you? In the Old Man now? Or where? Oh, no, in New Mexico, you know, and that sort of thing. So it's surprising what people are doing in the area, which we don't have an idea of. And it would be interesting to know what influenced them to come here, whether they're happy about staying here and what they think about the area for business or whatever. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to move on to item four on the agenda now. I'd like to invite David Lauder to present on the scrutiny of the Revenue and Capital Monitoring 2018-19 outturn statement. Over to you, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the year-end revenue and capital outturn report. Probably not a document you want to go through at the start of last fall in the afternoon, so I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. And obviously happy to answer any questions at the end. So this is the report that went to Cabinet on June 10th. And it relates to the year-end position as of the 31st of March, the financial year-end. So I'll quickly go through it. You'll notice in the report that some areas are highlighted green, and that's to show you which elements fall under this select committee portfolio. So if we quickly move on, if you go to section two, which highlights the recommendations that were proposed to Cabinet, I won't go through them all. But I'd like to bring your attention to 2.1, so members consider the outturn position of £49,000 surplus. 2.2, the members endorse that that surplus be used to replenish the capital receipts regeneration reserve. 2.4, the members note the performance of our budget setting savings for last year. And 2.6, that members note the capital outturn position for the year. So if we move to the revenue monitoring, I said in the recommendations, the authority underspent by £49,000. Now, that's actually a decline in what we reported in month two, oh, sorry, period two, which was month seven of £267,000. Now, there's a table in section three, that's the revenue monitoring statement. So this highlights each directorate's performance and shows how the £49,000 surplus or underspend was achieved. Below that, in paragraph 3.1.1, I'd just like to highlight that including this outturn position is £894,000 of revenue benefit, which was derived from a Welsh Government capital grant that we had late in the year. We will manage to move some revenue costs across that capital. So what I'm trying to say is without that capital benefit, the outturn position would be far worse. Okay? Then we have a table in 3.1.3 and 3.1.4. So this just gives us the performance of the authority over the last five years. So as you can see for column 18, 19, at outturn, it shows that we had a £49,000 surplus. But in previous years, we've always shown a surplus. So it just shows that there's been a large decline in trend against budget for this financial year. So if you move down to section 3.2.3, now this is to do with the Economy and Development Select portfolio. So the actual areas within the portfolio underspent by £253,000. So we've got business growth and enterprise underspent by £152,000. That's mainly down to staff savings, vacancy savings. We have planning and housing showing a £279,000 underspend. That's mainly down to savings on professional fees relating to the delay in the LDP. Okay? And then tourism, leisure and culture, we've got £177,000 overspend. There's a little bit of narrative there about the outdoor education service, where we moved quite a lot of overspend to the trading reserve. Now, if that hadn't happened, if we didn't have that reserve, the overspend for that department would be a lot higher. But other areas, we had some redundancy costs in attractions. And we've had general staff vacancy saving issues, trying to find those staff vacancy savings in other areas. And then we've got a £10,000 overspend in public protection, which is just general overspend within registrars, public health and trading standards. So that's a very brief description. There are spreadsheets that accompany this report online, and if you need further information, you can go to them. Also included in section three is the director's commentary that accompany the figures. So that can provide you with some more data if needs be. And then section 3.3, this just gives us a summary of the savings performance of the authority. So just over £5 million that we built into our 1819 budget. Just over £4 million were found, with £515,000 unachievable and £436,000 delayed. I think all the initiatives within this portfolio were actually achieved. But more details of the authority savings as a whole can be found in appendix one of the report. So then moving on to capital outturn, which is paragraph 3.4. Overall capital budgets, the authority overspent by just over a million pounds. The main causes for this are listed in paragraph 3.4.3. Mainly Caldicott School, £700,000 because of asbestos. Vehicle purchases of £330,000 and schools IT of 160. Paragraph 3.4.2, this just lists the additions made in the programme during the year. And it's worth just pointing out that the authority actually received an additional schools maintenance grant right at year-end, which we've managed to move in year spend across to and then slip that budget across into this year. So we've got an extra million pounds for school maintenance in this financial year. It also just shows, you heard me talk earlier about the additional capital monies that we had. It also just breaks down how the rest of that was allocated through till year-end, so it's listed there. And you can see some of it does benefit areas within the portfolio. So there was some light equipment at Better Theatre, there was some major catering equipment at Caldicott Castle. So it's just listed there on how that money was spent. So then capital slippage, there was just under £10 million was a capital slippage at year-end. And the details of this is in 3.4.4. I think the only major slippage within this portfolio is the capital region-city deal. But some of the larger schemes that we slipped as an authority include the J Block redevelopment, just over £2 million. Abergaveni hub, 2.2 million. include the J block redevelopment, just over £2 million, Abergavenie hub, 2.2 million. We had some highways, infrastructure grant and waste schemes, just over £1.6 million. Section one of six schemes of £766,000, and some car park works and ticket machine works are just over a quarter million pounds. So quickly finishing off, table 3.5 just runs through the financing mechanism for the capital spend for the year. 3.6 shows us the profiles of capital receipts activity for the year. And then lastly, 3.7 is covers reserve usage. So at the end of the financial year, the council fund balance was 6.9 million, and our year mark reserve was 6.6. So in paragraph 3.7.3, it just shows that the general fund balance is 4.8% of net budget expenditure. And this falls within the appropriate guidelines limits of between 4 and 6%. And then I think the last paragraph there just shows that the £49,000 surplus that we made is going to be used to replenish the capital receipts regeneration reserve. So I know that was very brief, very important to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Francis, would you like to say a few words first, please, before I throw it to the floor?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the outturn for the end of the financial year, as set out within the report, I think it's a significant achievement in terms of what we've delivered as a director and a portfolio. And thanks go to all of the officers that have continued to manage that throughout the financial year. We were lucky in some respects in terms of financial assistance that we received through some grants, and we've been able to benefit as a whole directorate for that final outturn. But on the whole, it's a positive position, and some of the trends that we've identified, we will be working on within this financial year as well. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Francis. Councillors, would anybody like to ask any questions, please? I think that we've had a, a long day looking at the LDP. Are there any particular areas that we should be concerned about? Particularly, I know that we're looking at last year, we're thinking about the potential build up of issues that are going to impact us in the next financial year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll say a bit and then maybe, maybe Francis will, he'll come in. Pressures this financial year, we've got pressures in our mon life area at the minute. That's because obviously the decision was made late on that we weren't going to go out and, and weren't going to attain charity status. So a lot of the savings that were running off the back of that were actually included in the, in the budget. So now obviously we're not going out. That becomes a burden on the department, whatever the areas within this area. Can you think of anything else? Apart from that, I think, I think the rest can, we can muddle on along to touch wood.
One of the things that you mentioned was grants. They're obviously very important. Are we as a council able to focus on grant applications? Have we got enough staff in our area in order to do it? And are we capitalising on every grant opportunity that there is? Thank you.
Yes. Most departments have got, have probably got grant officers. We do benefit from a lot of grants throughout the authority, and in particular Francis's department. Last year was unique in that Welsh Government made available quite a lot of money at the last minute, and that allowed us to produce that, that revenue benefit that eventually got us over the line. We have got grant in this financial year that's come from Welsh Government that we've already built into our budget. But yeah, we have, we do have grant officers. I think they do actively go looking for, for grant. So I don't think there's any magical pots of money out there that we're not tapping into. So no, it's okay.
Francis, would you like to say something on this?
With regards to the portfolio that we're considering here in Economy and Development Select, the areas that are in that part of the portfolio, I think we're quite comfortable that the outturn for this financial year should be sound. The mon life considerations will be coming into full council in September, so hopefully that will bring forward a potential solution there which will deal with potential revenue pressures from that particular service area. But with regards to the, the grant funding, we're always chasing opportunities for, for bids and bid development. One of the areas of risk that we're identifying at the moment is with regards to the RDP programme and what happens when the RDP programme ends. We were anticipating some information with regards to the Shared Prosperity Fund from UK government at the end of last year and then earlier on in this year. That still hasn't been announced and we haven't got any real clarity in detail around that at the moment. But that's going to be very industry sector focused. So there is a potential gap at the moment with regards to what happens at the end of the RDP programme and what would be a natural successor programme for that. So that's something we're already starting to lobby about and raise in terms of, in WLGA arena and other arenas, because that will be a risk for us at the end of that programme if there isn't something that we'll succeed at.
Thank you very much. It doesn't look as though there are any further questions.
Sorry, just to clarify, because we have a stand in chair today, but the role of the committee really is to, to discuss areas of concern which you just have, and to highlight any areas that you feel need to be reported through to the cabinet member. But I think you've asked questions, you've had your reassurances, and it's a case of keeping a watch in brief.
Okay, thank you, councillors and officers. I think that we've done that purpose, met that purpose. I think that we can now close the meeting. Thank you very much.